Hello, my name is Paul Scott. I'm a regular guy, an AIDS activist, a veteran, and one of the first marijuana collective owners in California. As someone who has lived with HIV for more than 20 years, helping pass Ordinance F and defeating Proposition D is very personal for me. Ordinance F will protect our communities, strictly regulate medical marijuana by requiring dispensaries to register, and most important, will provide access for patients like me who need medical marijuana to just get by every day. Critics of Ordinance F say there will be a pot shop on every corner. That is simply not true. The city's own planning department says Ordinance F will limit the number of dispensaries to about 400 citywide because they cannot be within 1,000 feet of a school. And while D allows minors inside a marijuana dispensary, Ordinance F prohibits anyone under the age of 18 from entering. And unlike D, Ordinance F protects patients like me because it requires dispensaries to test marijuana for pesticides and other contaminants before providing medical marijuana to patients. Ordinance F is good for this city and good for patients. On the other hand, Proposition D doesn't work. It's a fraud, and here's why. Proposition D is a fraud because it aims to shut down almost every legally operated dispensary in Los Angeles. And the very few that will remain open will become Walmart-style marijuana superstores, resulting in hour-long lines for patients. And because D does not require any parking or security or criminal background checks for all dispensary workers, D will certainly become a nightmare for the neighborhoods. D was slapped on the ballot by the same L.A. city politicians who have fumbled the marijuana issue for years and voted just last year to close every dispensary in Los Angeles. This is the same city council that approved efforts by the DEA to raid dispensaries across the city. And the past two weeks alone, a number of dispensaries, some which have been operating illegally prior to 2007, have been forced to close, denying patients access to their vital medicine. In short, D is a fraud. People like me need access to medical marijuana, and Ordinance F is the only measure on the ballot that will guarantee access. Access to medical marijuana can make the difference between life and death for me and others. It has certainly made a difference in my being able to talk with you today. F respects residents, protects our children, and demands safe medicine for people like me. Please vote yes on F and no on D. To learn more about F, go to www.votyesonf.com. And to learn why D doesn't work, go to www.ddoesn'twork.com.
Hello, I'm city council member and former police chief Bernard Parks. Initiative F on the May ballot will increase the proliferation of illegal pot shops across Los Angeles. It will not overturn federal law, which prohibits the sale or possession of marijuana for any reason. This initiative will only protect the untold millions of illegal cash profits made by illegal pot shop owners at the expense of our communities. The continued operation of illegal pot shops only creates the potential for increased blight, robberies, and even homicides. Law enforcement needs every tool possible to keep our city safe. It will not provide additional revenue for Los Angeles. Medicine is not subject to tax. This initiative will just place the city in endless litigation and divert vital resources from our core services. We all have sympathy for the seriously ill. However, this initiative does nothing to protect patients. Join law enforcement and community leaders across Los Angeles and vote no on F.
Sargent, would you please call the members and have them report to the council chambers? Sargent, please call the members, have them report to the council chambers. And members, if you're in your office, please come down and report to the council chamber. Sargent, please call the members. Mr. Zine is here. So we can get started, right? Okay, thanks, Phil, for coming, Mr. Zine. I'd like any member that's in his office to come down. Sargent, get on the phone. Let me know the ETAs of the members. I was informed that Mr. Rosendahl should be here shortly. One minute, Billy. Sargent, talk to me. Sargent, I want to know the ETAs. Good morning, everyone. Today is May 10th, 2013. I want to... I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We do not have a quorum as of yet, but we can begin with the presentation portion of our agenda. And I'd like to call on Mr. Bill Rosendahl at this time, so if I could get quiet in the council chambers. Mr. Rosendahl, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank my colleagues who are here. And I've got some really exciting, good news that I've been dealing with and an issue that's been a large one. Many of you know that when you get to the corner of Bundy and Santa Monica Boulevard, you see a little park. And this little park has been closed. My predecessors kept it closed, both Marvin Browdy and Cindy Misakowski, due to the reality of homelessness. You know, we've got a big problem of homelessness in this city. And I'm ashamed, as an American, to see that we have not put enough resources in place for the homeless. So the homeless have used this historically as a place where they would put their stuff. They would kind of hang at the edge of it. And as I drove by it all these years, I said, "We can do better than this." And I'm here to announce that we have done better than this. And standing next to me is Joel Epstein and Streetblocks. First, let's open those eggs, so people can see them, so that we got them right. Joel has earned these eggs the hard way. Joel, these are your eggs. We've got a nice... Move to the side, Lenny, so that the cameras can get it. And this is all about ecology and doing the right thing. I know, colleagues, you're all going to wonder, "Where are the eggs when I'm no longer here?" Well, that's just too bad.
I'll come to your house, Bill. And Bill, why don't you guys get on both sides of...
I don't know why they...
Move closer. We want to see those beautiful children.
Don't hide behind anybody. This guy shouldn't hide behind anybody. Let me start with the first one, to Joel Epstein. On behalf of the constituents of the 11th District and the residents of the City of Los Angeles, I want to extend my sincere gratitude to Joel Epstein. Thanks to your contributions on The Huffington Post and Streetblog, Angelenos have a better understanding of the meaning of public, open space on the west side of Los Angeles. Your coverage of the Bundy Triangle resulted in the reopening of a space that is available to everyone in the City of Los Angeles. Joel Epstein, there you go, big guy. Stand right there.
Let's give him a round of applause.
And on the other side is the Streetblogger. Look, his great wife and kids, come on up, bring them up. What I want to know is how they get them on the bikes and move around, but they do. They're just amazing. Streetblog, on behalf of the constituents in the 11th District and the residents of the City of Los Angeles, I want to congratulate Los Angeles Streetblog on five years of educating the public by providing a daily news source, connecting people to information about sustainability, transportation, and livable communities. Los Angeles Streetblog was launched in 2008, and I might say I got on a bicycle again after 30 years and found myself able to do it, and that was terrific. That Streetblog was launched in 2008 and is reporting has earned praise for clearly articulating a living streets message as car culture capital of the world. Thank you for creating a better city of Los Angeles. That's your lovely wife, and I want you...
Congratulations.
...to speak for a second. I want to thank Len Wen and Jim Horowitz, who have fought so hard to open that. Thank you, Len, you've been a great leader on that, and I appreciate it very much. If I could, have the wonderful folks say a few words. You get up first. Say whatever you want.
I want to say thank you to Bill for working to get this park reopened. I hope it's the beginning of the reopening of many parks throughout the city. I think we obviously need to address the very severe homeless problem in this city, but there's no reason that park and public space shouldn't belong to the people in general. And then I also want to invite you all over for omelets. Thank you.
Go ahead, say a few words.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much for the chance to speak today, and thank you all for wishing us a happy birthday with Streetsblog. I brought my children with me today, right here, not just so that they can see their dad get an award and get on TV, but because the reason we work so hard to put out Streetsblog every day is kids. We can't fix all the problems in the world as much as we'd like to for them, but we can give our children a safe and clean city with affordable transportation options and open space and healthy communities. And that's what we're about. It's more than bike lanes and more than the Expo line and more than the Gold Line. It's about helping create a future through journalism by highlighting the good work of community leaders, volunteers, parents, businesses, and yes, even sometimes, city council members. With the 2013 elections, the city's at a crossroads when it comes to transportation. Yes, we have a growing transit system, in large part to measure our, but will we see projects completed in time for these children to enjoy them? And yes, we have a bike plan, but do we have the courage to implement it? Yes, we have new pedestrian coordinators at LADOT for the first time ever, but can we find the funds to fix our sidewalks and make all our intersections ADA compliant? We're at a crossroad with political readership. Many of our stalwart supporters on the city council, and I see a lot of them sitting here, Ed Reyes, who was just at his chair a second ago, Bill Rosendahl, right next to me, Eric Garcetti, and Jan Perry are all, just to name a few, are all moving on. And so it's up to the rest of you up on the dais to step up and rise up to replace them as some of the large champions for livable streets. Can we all continue to move the city forward to a green transportation, or will we backslide into just trying to program a street city to move as many cars as possible? Time will tell, but as the story unfolds, we'll be here for at least five more years, and I look forward to being back up on the dais to say hi to you all again then. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon and Mr. Kocorian. Richard, Ewan, and Paul, please start.
Yeah, okay. Councilmembers, it's my pleasure today to recognize somebody for their accomplishment at a very unique and special place in Sunland Tahunga, which is the Magority Arts Center. I am speaking today of honoring the service of Claire Nolton, who is the outgoing executive director of the Magority Arts Center. It's been my pleasure to get to know Claire this past year, as redistricting allowed me to the opportunity to represent Sunland Tahunga community, which is the home of the Magority Arts Center. For those who have not been there or not heard of it, the center is a gem of the northeast San Fernando Valley, providing art, music, dance classes to kids and adults from the region, as well as meeting and retreat space. It's a beautiful facility with oak trees surrounding it, it's in the middle of a forest. It's really cool. The location allows students and adults from the surrounding community to detach from the bustle of city life, otherwise known as everywhere but Sunland Tahunga, and create art or music. Claire's leadership as executive director has helped Magority Arts Center thrive these past years. Today, we want to thank her for her commitment. She began working at the Magority Arts Center in 2005, first as assistant director, then as executive director in 2006, and the center was on the brink of collapse and failure when she was hired. But under her leadership, Magority has emerged as a model of excellence in the community, in community arts programming and organizational management. Her skill analyzing data, building partnerships, and accurately measuring the need has led to a tremendous increase in services provided by the center funded by a growing base of foundations and individuals throughout the region. Claire was one of 10 arts leaders selected for the prestigious 2008-2009 class of the Los Angeles County Arts Commission's Executive Leadership Group, and has completed programs in nonprofit management through Harvard, Stanford, and Indiana universities. Before coming to Magority, Claire spent three years working in development as a supervisor for the University of Pacific's Office of Annual Giving and managing after-school programs in the Stockton Unified School District with the Jacobi Center for Public Service and Civic Leadership. Now, this is all very interesting, but what I find most interesting is working for the Magority Arts Center was not Claire's first experience there. In fact, Claire is a product of the Magority Arts Center programs. She began taking arts classes at the center at the age of three, and her first job was as a Magority teacher's assistant through the arts internship programs. So for those people who think that the easiest thing to cut is the arts and recreation and those soft programs, Claire is an example of exactly why it's so important for our economy to continue to grow expertise in these fields. She's committed to providing her community with enriching experiences and training that she was fortunate to receive in her youth through the Magority Arts Center, and now she's moving on to a different kind of world, but in the same arena. Her next step is to work at the accounting firm of Quigley &amp; Myron focused on accounting for nonprofit organizations. It's going to be a loss for the City of Los Angeles, however, the nonprofits who benefit from her work at Quigley &amp; Myron are going to gain, and this is a new role, and she will be able to help many local nonprofits become more successful as she did at the Magority Arts Center. With that, I'd like to hand it over to Paul Kocorian, who had twice as much time working with Claire as I did.
Thank you, Mr. Alakon. What an honor it is to be able to recognize Claire's incredible work for our entire city, not just for CD, well, CD2 and CD7. And I didn't realize that you were going to do accounting work for nonprofit organizations. I can't think of anybody who's better suited for that, given what you've had to go through as the director of the Magority Arts Center in counting every penny and making sure that they've worked effectively for the people who the Magority Arts Center serves. Members, the Magority home in Tahunga is, as Mr. Alakon mentioned, one of our city's great treasures, because it connects us with a sometimes little-known but really important part of the city's history. John Magority, who lived there, was one of the early founders of the Tahunga community. The home is a beautiful example of the kind of river rock architecture that's known throughout the area, with some of the most commanding views of the Sunland Tahunga area from up there. Mr. Magority was the state's first poet laureate, as well as being a member of Congress and a columnist for The Los Angeles Times for over four decades. So the place is steeped in the history and the culture of Los Angeles. But unfortunately, over the years, that place had fallen into significant disrepair and decay. And it was really through Claire's leadership and her vision and her assertiveness that we were able to secure $250,000 to upgrade the infrastructure there, to bring that home to more modern standards. But more importantly than even what the building itself is, what goes on inside the building. And that's also due to Claire's leadership and vision, where every single day, there are schoolkids in that building, in that historic building, getting enriched through arts classes, ceramics classes, through poetry, through dance, through music. The poet laureate of Sunland Tahunga every year is announced in that building. It is a place that, as many of our districts have, that one unique, precious place that brings a community together. That's the Magority Arts Center, and it's in recent years, that has been entirely due to Claire's drive, Claire's commitment, Claire's unwillingness to take no for an answer. And so I just couldn't be more thrilled to be here with Mr. Alakon, recognizing all that she has given to that community, but as well, equally, to the entire City of Los Angeles. So please join Mr. Alakon and I in recognizing the extraordinary work of Claire Nolton.
Thank you so much. This is such an honor. I would love to introduce my friends and family who are with me, my parents, Angie and Gary Nolton, my boyfriend, Michael Chivoni, and the board chair of Magority Arts Center, Michelle Barone, who has been board chair the same amount of time that I was executive director, and she continues to serve as board chair. So her leadership has also been really essential to the growth we've had at the organization. I really want to recognize how important the city infrastructural support of Magority Arts Center has been, working with now three different council people. First, working with Wendy Gruel, who provided me with the opportunity to do a grants workshop. It was a six-month program. I don't even know how much it cost, but she paid for it, and as a result, I've been able to raise hundreds of thousands of dollars for the organization, money that we wouldn't have been able to secure without that training. As Councilmember Kocorian mentioned, the infrastructural improvements to the physical building were so essential, and I'm not exaggerating when I say that the electrical system that was in place was set up to burn that building down. I mean, it was so terrible. And what has been replaced now has made sure that instead of being a ticking time bomb, this building is now going into the future for the community, and that has been so amazing and essential. And Councilmember Alakon, we've had such a short amount of time to work together, but your identification of Magority Arts Center is important. And within days of bringing us into your district, you and Becca, chief of staff, came out to meet with me to understand our needs, and your office has always been available to support us in whatever we need. And so I thank all of the council for their support of this organization. It is a city-owned facility and a city-maintained facility, and so I also want to thank all of the people at General Services that have really gone above and beyond, employees like Ron and Manny, who just really step it up and do whatever they can to make sure that the building is functioning and awesome. And then the last thing that I would say is, in the work that I've done at Magority, sometimes problems can seem very large, and they can be difficult to find a solution to, and we can feel like we don't have a lot of control or influence over making a difference. But there are many small ways in which we control our own actions and how we behave toward each other, toward animals, toward the buildings that we work in, toward the environment around us. And by doing very small, positive things to make things just a little bit better, you find that all of those add up over time, and that other people join you in doing very small incremental things that make things bigger and better. And over the course of eight years, I guess it adds up to something as good as Magority Arts Center has become. So thank you so much for this honor. I really appreciate it.
Okay, let's give her a round of applause. Okay, now, we're getting ready to start our Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, but before we do that, I'd like to introduce to everybody Linda, who's from which shelter? She's from the North Central Animal Shelter, and she's here looking for a home. She's three months old, and she's got one of the most beautiful colors that I have ever seen on a companion animal. She has a very unique look to her. We have a 100% adoption rate at the City of Los Angeles. We'd like to keep that streak going. If you'd like to adopt, in fact, the big pit bull that we had a few weeks ago was adopted, so Bruno, we found Bruno a home. Usually, these dogs are adopted by individuals that are in City Hall, watching us on television, or in the gallery like you folks. And some are watching us on television, so call 888-452-7381. And we're going to keep Linda here for a while and show her off as we do our other presentations. And if anyone here is interested in a companion animal that will love you for the rest of your life, I'd say we've got a great candidate for that right here with me. So with that said, let's let her stay up here for a while. And are we ready to start with the mayor's... Quickly. Quickly.
One thing real quickly.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, Council President and members. It's great to be here with you once again. I've said all year that this is my last Heritage Month. And for each group, each community that we acknowledge and honor, it has been, but this actually is the last Heritage Month celebration. And as you know...
Yes, that's worth a round of applause.
And as you know, we celebrate an Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month today. And I want to give a big hand to the haka dancers. Let's give them a big hand. I'm reminded that I've never missed one of these celebrations. I've participated in every one, including the poster and the essay writing contest that we have. And I do because these celebrations are important to me, and I know they are to you too. During our Heritage Month, it's an opportunity for the city to come together, to revel in our diversity, to take pride in it. It takes a tremendous amount of energy and effort to organize these special events. And I want to recognize and thank the Asian and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month Planning Committee. I don't know if they're here, but if they are, can they please stand? And we applaud them because we're here, because of their hard work and enthusiasm. I also want to acknowledge my staff. They've had, over the years, big job because I can get cranky from time to time. And, you know, I want these to go smoothly. Sometimes they do. Sometimes they don't go as smoothly as I would like, but they work very, very hard. And they do because, like me, there's a culture in our office that respects diversity, that believes in it, that believes that we're better off when we're connected to one another. And I want to acknowledge them. If the staff are here, raise your hand or stand. I also want to recognize our honorees. My friend of some 15 to 20 years, we're trying to figure out, Bruce Seito, no stranger to any of you.
Give Bruce, I mean, give him a round of applause. He deserves it. He's a hard-working, good brother. He's a good brother.
Yes, he is, a good brother. Chef Jet Tila, who's also here with us today. And also, LA18 KS-CI-TV. Let's give them all a big hand. This month, we celebrate the long and rich history of the Asian experience in our city, our state, and our country. This history is the history of triumph, the triumph of openness and opportunity over bigotry and bias. And I want us all to remember, we forget sometimes, that in the 1880s, in this city, there was a race riot against the Chinese, that it was this state and the nation because of the Chinese and Japanese that lived in this state that enacted laws to prevent them from emigrating, owning property, and so many other things. So, when I say they've had overcome adversity, they have. And they have triumphed as well. During this month, we recognize how far we truly have come. For over a century, men and women from all across Asia have come to Los Angeles, and they continue to come. You know, a lot is said about the fact that this is the most diverse city and that it's, you know, the Latinos now are, what, 48% of the city? And I always say, "Well, yeah, in this century. In the next one, we may be 50% Chinese or 50% API." That's LA. LA's a city that just says, "Welcome, dreamers. Welcome." And people from Asia have been coming here, have been adventurers and entrepreneurs, working men and women, artists and refugees, those in exile, mothers and fathers, the young and the old. They've come here to settle, to start families, to find refuge, to study, to build businesses, to sojourn. You know, we're 42% foreign-born in this town, probably the largest population of foreign-born of any big city in the United States. As an example, New York is 28% foreign-born. But what people don't realize about why immigration is so important, 44% of all the new businesses that are started in this town are started by immigrants, many of them Asian. Now, through the decades and over many generations, our Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities have grown and prospered, and they continue to succeed and flourish. Yesterday, President Park was at my home, at your home, at Getty House, the first woman elected president in the Republic of South Korea, a woman... And I said to her then, "It's hard for us to imagine what LA would be like without the Korean community." But the same is true. It's hard to imagine what we'd be without the Chinese community, the Japanese-American community, the Thai community, the Filipino community, the many communities that come from Asia to this great city. They've infused our city with their values, family and hard work. Their cultural energy flows through our art, our food, and our music. You heard the haka drummers just a few minutes ago. Los Angeles is unthinkable without Asian-American and Pacific Islander communities. It's unthinkable without you. So, it's an honor to stand here today and to celebrate the opening of Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month with you. Now, today, it is my privilege to present the hope, dream, and spirit of LA to three extraordinary API individuals and organizations. I want to begin with the spirit. I love the spirit. When we first came up with this notion, I said, "You know, there's something about the spirit of LA that makes us so unique and special." And I know you've been hearing me say this for eight years, but I'm going to say it again. Because when I first started saying it, it sounded like the words of a politician, you know, the hyperbole of someone who's so proud to get elected mayor that he says these things because he wants to feel good and make us feel good. I've always believed that what LA is, is the city of America's future, the city of its hope and its promise, the Venice of the 21st century with a portal to the East and the South, the capital of the Pacific Rim in so many ways. And if New York in the 20th century was a beacon of light and hope to the world and the city that the world looked to, if London was that city in the 19th, in the Pacific century, it's LA. And it's LA because of these many, many different communities that make up this town, that can connect with every corner of the earth. So, the spirit of LA is important. And growing up in a city can desensitize us sometimes to the majesty of this city, to the nature of this city, much like growing up in a rough household can make a bright future just seem out of reach. But Bruce Seito takes troubled youth in our communities, and he teaches them the skills of conservation. As executive director of the Los Angeles Conservation Corps, Bruce helps our environment and our young adults to thrive. Our council president called him a brother, and I love that because he is a brother. You know, this is a Japanese-American who's working with at-risk kids, the vast majority of whom are Latino and African-American. His heart is the heart of a human who sees the common human connection between him and these kids. He's been recognized for his service by the County of Los Angeles, the State of California, the federal government. He's been honored with a National Philanthropy Outstanding Professional Award. And today, I'm proud to add to that long list of designations by honoring Bruce Seito with the Spirit of Los Angeles Award.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council President Wesson and esteemed council members.
I got you a dog, Bruce. He's sitting up here waiting for you to come get him.
Okay. I don't know if my spirit goes that far, but I will be brief. This award for the spirit is much appreciated. I think you all know that the spirit within me is, exists in the spirit of you as elected. More importantly, the staff that I see, many colleagues and friends behind you, they've instilled that spirit in me. And most of all, the community that's behind me, not just the API community, but communities from a broad spectrum of the city of Los Angeles and the Southern California area. So, my spirit is genuine and true because of all of you, and also because of my small family that is here, my sister Lingayce Okada, and Kristi Sakamoto, and Kiki Okada. Thank you for being here. That spirit goes back to our folks and our parents that brought us into this world. And I want to thank you for everything that you've said about me and done for the LA Conservation Corps, and I'm extremely appreciative of this award. Thank you.
What is a dreamer if it's not someone who can close their eyes and see the future? Who can close their eyes and see what others can't, what hasn't been done, what can be? Now, there's no substance that binds us together quite like good food. It's why, you know, you all know I'm a foodie. And you ought to know, in the last 10 years or so, LA has gone from a city that wasn't even in the top 10 to now a city that's probably number two or three. And it's in no small part because of people like Chef Jet Tila. And the reason is, they're developing dishes that in many ways are fusion dishes. In many ways, take from the old and add the new and mix the experiences and the cultures that so many of us have. And we're lucky in Los Angeles to be home, as I said, of some of the best restaurants. But we didn't become a culinary mecca by accident. We got there through talent, through creativity. And Chef Jet Tila adds to the rich flavor of LA with his unique style of cooking and flair in the kitchen. As I said, thanks to his diverse background and education, he's as comfortable a chef and consultant as he is as teacher and student in the art of food. As a former Iron Chef America, Tila inspired our nation to think out the side of the box when attempting meals at home. With his launch of his new restaurants, Modern Asian Kitchen and Kumah Snow Cream, it's inspired us to eat great food away from home as well. And with his extensive national TV and radio appearances as a guest judge on Chopped and as a host of his own radio show on KLAA, he teaches us all about how good food can be. For his many achievements in the culinary arts, I'm proud to honor Chef Jet Tila with the Dream of Los Angeles Award.
Hey, chef, I'm a big Chopped fan, and I have seen you on there as a judge.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Where do I begin? You know, I am the culmination of a dream that two people had 40 years ago, and those two people are my parents, who immigrated here from Thailand. And I got to give it up because I'm also Thai-Chinese, so this is not just for the Thai community, it's also for the Chinese community. But a special recognition to my mom, for without her... For without her, I would be nothing. But I accept this recognition for all the immigrant kids of restaurant owners that have gone on to go to culinary school and to achieve higher things. So, it's not about me, it's about all of us. And I'm absolutely proud to stand in front of you in the city that created me and that I love so much. But thank you very much again, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, everyone.
Now, Jet, let me just say, I love that you started off with your mom. Well, because, you know, in some of our cases, we came here as children, in other cases, we, you know, our parents and our grandparents came here. Think about what it was like for them, how hard it was, how much they struggled. So, to thank your mom is to acknowledge the shoulders on which you stand. That's very great. Let's give him a big hand. The hope of Los Angeles. Why do dreamers come to America? Why do they come specifically to LA? They come because they have hope in their hearts. They come because they're dreamers and they want to live a better life. And sometimes they're isolated in a way that makes it very difficult for them. We all know that information is power. How many times have you read in our newspapers, as an example, about the real breadth of diversity in this town? You'll get an article here and there. Very few of the people in the media actually come from these communities, even though we're 64% from Asia, Africa, and Latin America, even though we're 42% foreign-born, very few of these people actually, you know, are foreign-born. So, what happens? Things are happening in this town every day that nobody knows about unless you open the door or reach your arm out to one of those communities. That's why we need Asian-language television and Spanish-language television. We need to communicate with everybody. We need English language and English print and all of that. But we need to have mediums of communication that can communicate the stories of success. Why is this immigration debate so polarized and so silly when you think about it? Because we don't hear the stories of Jet Tila and Bruce Seito, of their kids, of their moms. We don't hear enough about those stories of success, of trials and tribulation. So, to have an Asian-language TV station here, LA18, that educates and informs Angelenos and Americans every day, they arm their audience with information they need to make educated choices in their community, they entertain them with a diverse range of programming. LA18 actually reaches out to 6.2 million households in LA, Orange, San Bernardino, Riverside, Ventura, and all the way to San Diego counties, providing a unique source of news, sports, drama, and entertainment programs. Hear this, aired in 13... Hear this, aired in 13 different languages. So for being a leader in Asian television, serving the Chinese, the Korean, the Filipino, and the Vietnamese communities in Southern California since 1977, I'm proud to honor L.A. 18 with the Hope of Los Angeles Award.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, Heritage Committee members, today I have the honor on behalf of all the employees of Channel 18 to accept the Hope of Los Angeles Award. As broadcasters, we have the privilege to serve the Asian community every single day. We understand the duty and honor that we accept, and we are committed to use that to change the lives of people in the Asian community through our ability to transmit knowledge, information, and support. We will continue to support the Asian community as we go forward. We hope we can support others as well as we continue to support our audience and our viewers in the Los Angeles area. Thank you very much for this wonderful confirmation of our services and support to the Asian community. We appreciate it very much.
Congratulations. Mr. Mayor, before you go further, would this be an appropriate time for me to recognize other members here and allow them the opportunity to speak? Okay, thank you for the nod. With that said, Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your last Heritage Month, obviously, what you've done for the people of this city and your commitment to all our cultures in the city of Los Angeles is exemplary. Thank you, sir, and you definitely are mayor of the people. And we're going to miss your leadership, sir. To our Asian...
Can I just say something, Mr. Buscaino?
Yes, sir.
When I go to your home, to the home of your family, and I meet all these people, many of whom were not born here, came here from Italy with a dream, with a work ethic, with families, it reminds me of how connected we are.
True.
You have a beautiful family, and you also have a respect for the many communities that make up L.A.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we are truly blessed to live in the city, a city of many cultures, the diverse, most diverse city, I would say, in the world, and we are blessed in that nature. I just want to recognize the people, the API community in my district, from the Terminal Island Memorial to the Korean Friendship Bell, to one of my API heroes, Warren Furatani, now our Public Works Commissioner, one of my heroes. I know he's in the audience.
Give Warren a round of applause. Warren?
Mr. Furatani, thank you for being here. I love you, brother. And to my Chief of Staff, Don Liu, who leads CD-15 day in and day out in my office, I just want to stand and recognize our honorees. Thank you for who you are. God bless you, and a well-deserved honor. And we just want to recognize you and your family. And to all our API community across the city, thank you, and looking forward to an incredible Asian Pacific Islander American Heritage Month. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. And Mayor, you have one more Heritage Month to do, the gay and lesbian one, but you're going to get these eggs right now because you need the strength to work on your future. But when I see that incredible chef there, maybe you and I can have a relationship with my eggs. I don't know. But I'm going to give them to the mayor and dessert queen.
Bill Rosendahl on an egg. He's on an egg delivery. And you can't stop him, Mr. Mayor.
Bless you, brother.
Ah, thank you.
No matter what, do the best.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I love it.
Guys, come on, guys, get up here, all of you, especially the chef.
Wait, 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 wait. I like the green one.
There you go. All right.
Ham and green eggs, is that the one? Green eggs and ham. Green eggs and ham, that's this one.
And we'll do it again when we do the Gay Pride Heritage. One more set of eggs.
That's right. I forgot, we got another one. We got one more. You were right. I keep on saying this is my last one, and then I'm reminded. Thank you, that was great. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. I don't have any eggs to present this morning, but what I do have is the comments for our mayor, who has sat here in council as a council member, and for the last eight years is the mayor of this great city, and with your inspiration and acknowledgement of people in this city who have done well. And we've honored many diverse groups here in City Hall, and you have made a personal appearance to do that as the leader of the City of the Angels. So I want to commend you, first of all, Mr. Mayor, for your friendship, for your inspiration, and your love for all of Los Angeles. And you are a hero to so many in the City of the Angels, coming from humble beginnings and achieving the success you've achieved, not only in Sacramento, but here as the mayor of the City of Los Angeles. To the honorees, the three honorees, I know one of the three, Bruce Seito. You are the most humble person that I have come across who goes out there and works the fields of the city of Los Angeles. The Clean and Green Program, in which you have done so many times to help people, to help communities, to inspire communities, you roll your sleeves up, you get involved, you make it happen. So I want to acknowledge, I know Mr. Alakon and I have put dollars in so you can hire more of our youth during the programs, so you can do more for the city of Los Angeles. You've done extremely well with that, and it's a real pleasure to see you being honored this morning with this award for all that you have done for so many years. You are a very humble person, a hard worker, and this award you're receiving defines you and your acknowledgement and your success in the City of the Angels. The other two gentlemen, congratulations to you. I don't watch the TV station that often. I'm never home to watch TV in the first place, and I love the food, so I'll get around to see that and enjoy the food. So congratulations to all of the honorees. And again, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your leadership, your inspiration, and you have brought Los Angeles together, all the communities of Los Angeles, you have molded them together. So congratulations to you. Thank you all.
Mr. Labange.
And I do want to rise for our mayor. Why? Because our mayor crossed a big bridge, crossed a big river, crossed into this town and made a difference. I love a man or a woman who fights for people and then also excels, and excels and brings people together. And I think because you love people, you've never missed any event in this month celebration. But you missed a couple of St. Patrick's Day parades, so the Irish were after you. No, I'm kidding you. I just think, Mr. Mayor...
Like Irish.
I know, I know you are. It's great that this brings our city together. I think of Tom Bradley, how he opened this building as wide as could be when he was elected in '73 and brought the diversity that set a tone and a pace that you exceeded. Behind you, a great chef, a great station, a communication that is so important, and a great, consistent individual who has done work for well over 25 years. You're one of the, you're the original, the OG of the Conservation Corps. Absolutely, absolutely, Bruce Seito. And if you ever had a problem, Mr. Weston, in the old days, you'd call 1-800-BRUCESEITO, and it'd got handled. But I want to ask all those here for Bruce, just so you can see the love of Bruce Seito. Stand up and be recognized. Thank you. From the National Forest, to Edison, to DWP, to all the key Public Works Board, look at all that, Bruce. Okay, congratulations to everybody. And there's nothing like the town of Los Angeles with its town, whether it's Chinatown, Thai Town, Little Tokyo, historic Filipino town. And I know I may be missed a town, but I've missed a town to yours, I'll apologize and turn it back to our great mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Reyes.
It's always hard to follow Tom the Buzz, but I thank you for your work, Tommy, and my colleagues. Mr. Mayor, when you look at all the honorees, you've touched all the elements. Nutrition, that was nourishes us, and awardee for that amazing contribution. Communication, you look at being able to communicate to the spectrum of languages and cultures, you touched that. Bruce Seito, for me, I can tell you, was one of my unsung heroes. Back in the 1990s, I want to say 1991, on Pico Union, there's a fire station that gets reconfigured. Bruce had been looking for sites because the services were expanding. And to see him transform that pocket in Pico Union in that day, that was an oasis. Today, with his hard work, all of Pico Union, Westlake, is now an oasis. And when you touch the youngsters who are connected with Bruce and the management, one day I had the opportunity to walk in to the Conservation Corps Center, I just dropped in to see how they were doing, to see the computers, you could see the administration office, the meeting rooms, everyone was busy, everyone was hustling, they had teams out there working on different projects, the river plan, the alleyways, the parks. And when you go out there and you visit them, they're wearing the green t-shirts and their helmets, you ask them, what part of the city are you from? You hear every part. As a matter of fact, one of my staffers is a graduate of the Conservation Corps. So when I look at the profound impact in the day when we have cutbacks and the federal government is taking away resources, when the state is eliminating, for example, almost $50 million annually of our housing fees and our housing program monies, Bruce is there making it happen for these youngsters. So as a kid growing up in northeast, in Cypress Park, in Lincoln Heights, and I find that youngster and I ask him, talk to me about your family. I'm a family of four, six, seven, parents don't speak English, looking to help them pay the rent, to make sure they can pay for food. These are real stories of real people, and that's the light you bring to their lives. So for that, I say thank you, Bruce. Thank you to you, your management, all the great people, part of your team who are out there almost 24/7, making this city so beautiful. So my hat goes off to you, probably the last time I could say this publicly in front of an audience as a council member, but as a staff and council member, I got to see what your heart and soul can do for this great city. Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, all the awardees, and thank you, Mayor, for that. Great, 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 President.
Mr. Mayor, we turn it back to you. Well, the Asian and Pacific Islander American Heritage Month calendar is produced by Department of Cultural Affairs, and I'd like to acknowledge Ogagari and the staff from the department who are here with us today. It's actually one of the most sought-after publications produced by the city, and it's filled with an amazing array of API events and inspiring artwork from local artists. You can pick up a copy at City Hall South Plaza, and we're going to unveil it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, congratulations to the awardees. And at this time, Mr. Clerk... At this time, Mr. Clerk, could you call the roll, and then I'm going to ask Ms. Perry.
Alakon Buscaino, Englander, our city, we are Kareska, Corinne Labange, Parks, Prairie, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Weston, 13 members present, and Corin, Mr. President.
Thank you. I don't see Ms. Perry, so let's go through the agenda.
Very good, sir. The first order of business is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Buscaino moves, Englander seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Parks moves, Perry seconds, next.
Mr. President, there is a request from the Department of Building and Safety to receive and file Item 1, inasmuch as the property has been determined to be an owner-occupied single-family dwelling and therefore not eligible for lien confirmation procedures. Further, there is a request to hold Item 2 on the desk for an amendment, and there is also a request to continue Item 3 to May 15.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. What do we, where are we now?
Mr. President, that brings us to Item 4. It's an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, specials members, specials on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, next, Mr. Clerk.
Items 5 through 14 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Cards?
Yes, sir, we have cards on Items 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, and 14.
Okay, let's hold those items.
Very good, sir. That leaves Items 9, 12, and 13.
Specials, Mr. Zine.
9 fourth with.
9, well, we had to vote on it. So let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, 9 is fourth with for Mr. Zine. Okay, Ms. Perry, are you ready? I lost her again. I just saw her. Oh, there she is, Ms. Perry for a presentation.
Sherry's not here. Sherry? Okay, oh, Sherry, hi. Okay, thank you very much. I'm standing here today with Kelly Garrison, who is the General Director of the DeCamara Society, Sherry Herring, Carol Kraus, and Terrence Huntune. And this is an opportunity to celebrate and thank them for their nearly four decades of offering our city the gift of great music. Founded at Mount St. Mary's College in 1973 by Dr. Mary Ann Bonino, the DeCamara Society has been a leading advocate for providing an audience for great classical music that otherwise would not be heard. By presenting concerts at historical landmarks throughout Los Angeles, they are exposing classical music to two new listeners and communities. Through their efforts, they have brought classical music to many historical sites, such as the Pico House in El Pueblo, the Bradbury Building, Union Station, the Doheeney Mansion on the downtown campus of Mount St. Mary's College, Frank Lloyd Wright's Hollyhock House, St. John's Episcopal Cathedral, the Rotunda of Los Angeles City Hall, and most recently, the historic Paul Williams 28th Street YMCA just off of Central Avenue. Kelly Garrison has continued Mary Ann Bonino's mission for the DeCamara Society's chamber music in historic sites and has continued to bring classical music to vibrant neighborhoods throughout Los Angeles, creating bridges between the diverse cultures, languages, and people who make up this city. They have organized and enriched local schools and community organizations by sharing the affirming power of music through a commitment to education through music. Many of these programs are free and allow people from across the city the opportunity to hear world-class music in their own backyard. So I'm very proud to stand here and congratulate the DeCamara Society on its 40th anniversary and to thank Kelly and his staff and all of those who have helped to support the DeCamara Society over the years. This is an important milestone to recognize and to celebrate. Can I say a few words?
Let's give him a round of applause. Congratulations.
Thank you, City Council and Councilwoman Jan Perry. The DeCamara Society's mission over these last 40 years has been to celebrate through music the cultural and civic diversity of this great city of angels and celebrate it. of this great city of angels and celebrate it we have through the presentation of thousands of chamber music in historic sites, concerts, and educational concerts across the Southland. There are so many to acknowledge for this contribution to our success. But we'd like to start by, first of all, acknowledging and thanking the City Council for this honor. We thank our founder, Dr. Mary Ann Bonino, whose vision and perseverance took us from a small entrepreneurial project to an important and vibrant cultural institution. We acknowledge and thank Mount St. Mary's College, where we are based, who has continued to nurture the DeComera Society and support it over these years. Certainly, the city of Los Angeles, its communities, its peoples, its beautiful and unique architecture and cultural history that has inspired both our founder and staff to continue to provide these beautiful services to our city. We thank the City of Los Angeles Department of Cultural Affairs and numerous foundations over the last 40 years that have funded us and continue to make chamber music in historic sites and our community outreach programs possible. We thank Councilwoman Jam Perry, in whom we found a kindred spirit and a staunch supporter of our mission, our commitment to great music and education. We thank our patrons and donors, whose unwavering support and literally their sheer enthusiasm has buoyed us, it's inspired us, and allows us to continue to strive for excellence. Our hundreds of community arts partners, who have partnered with us over the last 40 years. And of course, very thankful to our incredible staff, whose personal commitment to presenting the classical arts throughout Los Angeles while celebrating the great cultural history and architectural history of this city puts a face on it every day through their tireless commitment. And for this, we're truly very grateful.
Thank you.
Again, congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Perry. Okay, and before I want to call... No, aren't you going to do it from your chair?
I just want to recognize them. It's okay, Mr. President.
Okay, go right ahead. And I want everybody to know, I still have Linda. I'm babysitting her until somebody here decides to adopt her. Again, she's three months old and looking for a home. Mr. Laban, security dog.
Jenny, that's good. I won't tell you what I just told you up there, but there's a great picture.
Yeah, I know what you told me up here.
Okay.
I won't forget.
Okay, oh, God, I love you. Jenny Portola is here, formerly with Mr. Carter's office, now with the Sixth District Office. And she's a great student. And Jenny, tell us about the Solidad Enrichment Action Monroe High School, Panorama High School students, right? Tell them what they're doing.
Give yourselves a round of applause. Stand up and applaud yourself.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Jenny Portola. I'm the field representative for North Hills. And we are working with my senior lead officer, Senior Lead Officer Chacon. And what we're doing is a women-in-leadership program that we're doing with our local high schools in our neighborhood. And we're just teaching these young ladies what it takes to be effective leaders in our community. And so we want to make sure that one day they fill up these seats and we get more women in the City Council as well.
Great. Mr. Englander wants to say something quickly.
I want to say something to these distinguished young ladies and women that are here in our presence, and I wanted to thank you for coming here today. I see amongst you the leaders, our future leaders of the city of Los Angeles. That's what I see with you coming here today and gracing us with your beautiful presence. And thank you. What I'd like to see is some of you that are standing over there, sitting in some of these seats in the very near future. That's what I'd like to see. And wearing LAPD uniforms, wearing our fire uniforms, serving the people of Los Angeles in a much better role and capacity because I know that you all have the ability to do that and do great things for your community. It's just an honor to have you here, and it's a privilege, it's our privilege, that you took the time out of your schedule to come visit with us. So God bless you, and thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations. Mr. Reyes? Okay, what's the next order of business, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that would take us back to Items called Special.
And which is the first one called...
We had previously considered one. However, I've been told we did receive a card for that matter, so we should reconsider Item Number 1 and then call the Speaker.
Okay, so let's vote on reconsideration on that Item 1. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, well, we're going to take up Item 5. That's the first thing that I was able to grab. Mr. John Walsh and Juan Alcala. And Mr. Buscayino says for me to remind you that Mother's Day is coming up, and the dog Linda would be a great Mother's Day. Yeah. Okay, Mr. Walsh, followed by Juan Alcala.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. It's a wonderful day. For the first time, Wendy Gruel is in the lead. Where's Garcetti? Out there like a rat caught in a trap chewing his own leg off and panicked to escape. Item 8.
For the record, he is not talking about Item 5.
Talking about the city. Okay, this is a tax credit for gun buyback programs. We're all in favor of it. But the mayor has used this shamefully for publicity. And I would like to know, of all the guns, how many were working condition? How many were totally useless, but yet you paid them the most? Viva Wendy, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Item 1 is not up there. I want to give everybody my vote and writing card again because...
This is not about the rent escrow program.
My votes were grossly miscounted. I don't know what kind of a city you're running. Anyway, once again, I'm telling you, do not make a homeless-making society. You go around giving people liens on their houses, then you take them away. Then you create a tax, taxes to take people's homes away.
Sir, this is on 5J, a specific address, 6613 West 15th Street. Do you have a comment on that case?
I'm sorry, I told you we're on Item 1.
Again, thank you. You are disrupting this meeting. Next item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next item.
That brings us to Item 1, called Special for Cards.
Okay, Item 1, we have Juan Alcala, Kathy Jura, and Arnold Sacks. Item 1.
I can, I give everybody my card, just as a reminder that...
He is not talking about the lien.
Stay focused on the lien, please.
Yeah, there should be no tax liens on citizens. Citizens are the ones that pay everything that goes on in the city, and we should have a different system.
Excuse me, this is a nuisance abatement lien. He is not talking about this item.
Sir, you are now off the subject. Stay on the subject, otherwise you'll be disrupting the meeting. I'll have to give you a warning.
Nuisance abatement means that somebody's not taking care of the property, right? Is that, am I correct or not?
This is on Property 11001, North Munitica Avenue. Comment on that item.
I know. Isn't it because you don't take care of your house that they call it nuisance abatement? I thought that's what it was. And you find any excuse to take homes away. So if you don't like... Well, look at those people. They just found 10 years abducted, you know?
Sir, you're off the subject again.
Yeah, we're not watching over each other's homes to help one another. We're only watching to take care of ourselves, and we don't care about the neighbor. Unless we don't like the way their house looks, then we report them to the city, and the city makes sure that they lose their home. The city is a nuisance. We should abate the city and create a different way of running business.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, good morning, you crook. Arnold Sacks.
Sir, you are now being disruptive of the meeting with that type of commentary. You're disrupting the meeting with that conduct.
I am not disrupting the meeting.
With that conduct, you are. You've been warned.
Good. You should read the court document. They just had a case regarding public disruption of meetings that the court just ruled in Orange County. I suggest you read it, or maybe somebody read it to the city attorney because we know what a knucklehead he is. That being said, this is about the use of public resources, city employees to conduct inspections for code violations. You have spent time in council chambers with council staff, city staff, creating a mortgage-abatement nuisance ordinance and have yet to collect a penny.
He is not talking about this item on this piece of property.
Talking about the inspection costs. I am talking about code violations and inspection costs. Code violations and inspection costs are created by somebody going out to, a city staff person going out to properties when they get complaints about nuisance violations. I have to believe in my heart, which is something, an organ that none of you have, that's a heart, that somebody would call about a violation or a nuisance abatement regarding a foreclosed property.
He is not talking about this nuisance abatement item.
Sir, you are now, giving you a second warning. This cut off the microphone. He was not focused on this item. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you. You are not disrupting the meeting. The second warning, disrupting the meeting. Okay, Kathy Jura? Kathy Jura, are you here? Okay, last call for Kathy Jura. That calls public comment. Let's open the roll.
And, excuse me, Mr. President. And again, this is to receive and file this item inasmuch as the property has been determined to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling and therefore not eligible for lien confirmation procedures.
Thank you, sir. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Mr. President, that brings us to Item Number 2. We had held that item for Cards and for an amending motion. Amending Motion 2A has been distributed. It is now before council for consideration.
Okay. We have two cards on this item, John Walsh and Juan Alcala.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go, just Google J. Walsh Confidential, it all comes out.
Sir, stay focused on this item.
Alcohol sales for onsite consumption. I wish Garcetti was here, but mostly we aren't here. This is for a bar named The Grave Bar. Now, we don't have enough bar liquor licenses, consumption licenses, so we need more. And since it's called The Grave Bar, I would suspect that if Bela Lugosi was here, or rather, I should say Boris Karloff, he said, "I just love the grave." We need more and more alcohol in this country and in this city. And I've lived in this city for 1,000 years. Boris Karloff says, "Everyone should drink and die."
Thank you.
You know, he's right. I just came through Union Station, and they had drug-sniffing dogs.
Sir, this is about an item, a specific address. Please address the item on the agenda.
All the drugs called alcohol. It is a drug. They had drug-sniffing dogs at Union Station, but it's okay to do alcohol. You're given more licenses to consume alcohol. Alcohol is a drug. Alcohol is the worst drug that we have anywhere in the world. But we don't call it a drug because we derive a lot of revenue out of it. See, I asked the people, the police...
He is still not talking about this specific item.
In your consideration, hearing comments relative application for the determination of public conveniences of necessity for alcohol sales for one-site consumption at The Grave Maurice Bar and Lounge located at 116 West 4th Street, Los Angeles. You're talking about consuming more alcohol, letting people consume more drugs, and telling them, on the other hand, do not do drugs. Are we stupid or what?
Thank you. Seeing no one else on public comment. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to Item Number 6, called Special for Cards.
Dan Jones? John Walsh? Mr. Juan Alcala, still have time? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, my point of order, can I please have some quiet, please?
Mr. Jones, please proceed.
I listen to you. Good morning, my name is Daniel Jones. I'm in favor of this item. But I'm also in favor of the 911 dispatchers who can properly interpret... Well, they don't. Forty-nine percent of all 911 dispatch calls get dropped twice because of their foreign language incoming calls. And the 911 dispatches, well, from the police commission's word of mouth, get dropped. The response time for the average immigrant who can't speak English is that twice of 911 responses that speak English. The mayor says this is a city of immigrants. The mayor drops 49% of all incoming 911 dispatch calls. I would like to see the...
Sir, please, you have to lower your voice, sir. You got to relax. You're not disrupting the meeting. Let's cut off the microphone. Sir, you are not disrupting the meeting, sir. You need to be removed from this chamber.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I got a new post up there today and two from yesterday. This is very important. This is, the LA Fire Department is going to send emergency medical service ambulances to Dodger Stadium when there's a game. I don't know why they can't pay for it. They have, their salary is higher than any major league team. But I'm going to make a deal. I think we should make a deal with them. And this is the deal, to encourage the Dodgers.
And this is the deal, to encourage the Dodgers. If the Dodgers win the game, we pay for the ambulances. When the Dodgers lose the game, they pay for the ambulances. That way, we'll save a lot of money, and it will give everybody a good opportunity to root for the Dodgers. They lose, and they're in last place, they pay. We win, the Dodgers win, the city pays. How about it? HollywoodHighlands.org.
Sacala, you're already out of time, sir. Yes, you'll have more time in public comment. Constance Englander.
There is, there's nothing to report back yet. The Fire Department is still working on some of the details. I would ask that we do this in a very transparent manner, and therefore send it back to committee so they can actually go to the commission. They're close, but they're not there yet, and so those discussions are ongoing, so nothing's occurred at this point. So I'd ask that we just send this, defer this matter back to committee, and then we'll bring it back with a full update before anything is actually accepted.
Well, you are the maker of the motion. I did second it. It's in my district. I'll follow your advice. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we'll send this back to committee without objection.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number seven, called Special for Cards.
Arnold Sacks.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Good morning, you criminals. This refers to a city-owned 3.6-acre site in Councilman Wesson's district, CD 10. And so I guess you're looking for suggestions other than those suggestions. How about the plan that was drawn up for the Grand Avenue Park, where they got Quimby fees in front? I believe there is going to be development along the Expo Line. Hold your tongue, Mr. City Attorney. It says suggestion for city property.
He is conflating this item to have a discussion that is, should be reserved for general public comment, so he is not talking about this item.
Learn the development of projects on the city-owned 3.6-acre property. So I'm suggesting projects...
You have been directed by the city attorney to stay focused on this item. You are not disrupting the meeting, sir. You're not following the item.
Oh, I am following the item. I just can't help it if you don't understand. My suggestion is prepare a request for proposal for exploring developments of projects. That means you're looking for developments of projects. So whether I suggest them and then you put a request for proposal, you ought to read the agenda, is what you really ought to do. Now, you have developments going, being suggested for the Expo Line. Transit-oriented developments, which will generate Quimby fees. That could mean a park here. You could also look at a community garden for some of this area, unlike the community garden that was destroyed or ripped up in Jan Perry's district. Two suggestions for projects that are on the agenda that you don't seem to understand. Talk to the city attorney. Maybe he could give you some...
Thank you very much. Seen no one else on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tally the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item?
Mr. President, that brings us to item eight, called Special for Cards.
Okay, we have John Walsh and a card sent by Mr. Alcala. He's run out of time. Mr. Walsh.
You notice I don't need all the time to get off. I can get off really fast. Number eight, this is, again, a tax, a tax buyback. We're 100% in favor of it, and if you really want to know what's happening, stay tuned for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We all know that it's been shown that people with guns in their homes are 12 times more likely to use their gun on a family member or friendly visitor than an intruder, and so it's certainly been helpful to get some of those guns out of circulation with our very successful gun buyback program. But not everybody is willing to do this in exchange for a gift card or some of the other things that we've been offering. So to increase the participation, AB 232 would create a tax credit both for individuals and organizations and increase participation in gun buyback programs across the state. So I think this will help public safety in all the cities in California, particularly in ours, and I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Constance McCurets. Seen no one else on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tally the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 10, called Special for Cards.
Okay, we have one card on item 10. Mr. Sacks, you have one minute left. Mr. Sacks. He passes, he says, okay. Okay, seen no one on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tally the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That brings us to item 11, called Special for Cards.
Okay, we have Juan Alcala who's out of time. No other card. Seen no one on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tally the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. President, that brings us to item 14, called Cards.
Item 14. We have Arnold Sacks on 14, one minute left.
Boy, you got it. Thank you, Arnold Sacks. You are sharp as a basketball there, Mr. Criminal. It's amazing how you flaunt whatever. Anyway, this is item 14, and it, a project that will develop Quimby fees. This property will develop Quimby fees on this district, and since we know how quick and how park-rich the city is, but we also know that some council districts have looked into pocket parks for their council districts. Can you lower the conversation over here a little bit on the left-hand side? I know that's asking too much, but shush. Anyway, have you looked into changing, and this is important, the city charter to allow Quimby fees to be used for pocket parks? Otherwise, they just end up...
Thank you very much. That's your, Linda, you're a minute. Thank you very much, sir. It's good to have you here. Thank you very much. One announcement, we have the Terrier mix, Linda has been adopted, and congratulations. And it is someone, I believe, from Constance McCurets's office. Fantastic. Thank you so much. She's a beautiful dog. And let's open the roll, close the roll, tally the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Fantastic.
Mr. President, that brings us to general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay. I believe Dan Jones has left the building. John Walsh and Juan Alcala.
You noticed that Garcetti's not here. He's paid $115,000. He's out campaigning. But the good news is the Cal State poll came out yesterday. It's buried in the Times. For the first time, Wendy is leading. For the past six months, Wendy was behind. She's up by one point. The Bill Clinton commercials are working. In fact, all the liberals are leaving, even Rosendahl now is supporting Wendy. It's time to realize that Kevin James, racist Kevin James, he's in bed with Garcetti. In it for himself, as the commercial said, remember, I've been saying this, I've been saying that Wendy was leading for the past year. It was psychotic ravings. It's not psychotic ravings anymore. Wendy is in the lead. The only community where she does not have a big lead is the Hispanic community. I'm asking Jose Wezar, I'm asking for the spirit of Cesar Chavez. He and the spirit of Wendy Grull, I'm asking you not to vote for this man just because he speaks halfway decent Spanish. The black community, according to the Cal poll, 70% for Wendy. Men, over 55% for Wendy. This is an incredible change over the past three or four weeks. If you want to be with the winner, you will be with Wendy. You will not be with Tricky Ricky. You will not be with the Little Prince. Eric is in free fall, and the reason is he got in bed with a fascist named Kevin James. Dianne Feinstein, we have sent her an email immediately, just now. We are begging Dianne Feinstein to endorse Wendy. Now, Boxer is...
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Juan Alcala.
Well, politics, I mean, I voted for Garcetti, but I got thrown out of his party for looking either Mexican or homeless. I don't remember. Anyway, should I switch over to Grull? Grull? Where does Grull come from? I think you mix, what do you mix? That white powder. You mix it with water and you create grull. Anyway, my main concern is housing for everyone. I don't care who wins or loses, okay? As long as everybody has a place to live. I don't care if you, the council has to bend over backwards or forwards. It doesn't matter, as long as we create a different way to do real estate so all the poor people are accounted for and all the rich landlords move aside and make their money some other way. We should not be making money with basic real estate. The banks should not even be in existence anymore. They should have gone under. Nobody really voted to save the banks, and they're still holding all the basic real estate, and you're still creating all these laws, all these liens, all these ordinances to throw people out of their homes. You are running the wrong system, and one day it's going to come and bite you in the, you fill in the blank.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks.
Good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. You know, Wednesday's meeting was quite a fiasco, something that you should look forward to in the future, the authorization to go ahead with that rail yard development. That's a minor step. I believe that was three years ago or four years ago, there was a mega train that came through Los Angeles. Was it two miles, three miles, four miles long? That was an experiment. That's the reason for this new depot. There'll be a staging area in San Pedro, and there'll be the staging area by Union Station, and the trains will come together. So you have a problem with CEQA, NICPA, whatever environmental impact report you want. If you live in the east side of Los Angeles, not in East LA, which is not part of Los Angeles, but if you live in the counties to the east of Los Angeles, you can look forward to trains that could be three, four, five miles long, because that's the process that will be involved here, and that's the process that took place on Wednesday. But more importantly, it's funny when you go to John Walsh's confidential, and I'm sure he posted about his behavior on Wednesday, how he managed to jump to the front of the line to get into the room that was full of people, 300 people in city council chambers, and John Walsh got in the room by sniffing Dennis Zine's butt. Four police were standing there. Then, to make it even better, Herb Wesson, who, whatever relationship he has with John Walsh, either one, John Walsh being on his knees, lets him speak as a comment. 300 people, 200 cards, and John Walsh...
Thank you very much, sir. Have a good day. Glenn Bailey. Glenn Bailey.
My name is Glenn Bailey, and I wanted to speak on two items. First of all, the city council meeting at Van Nuys City Hall under the previous council president that was changed from every month on the first Friday to every other month. So even though the San Fernando Valley represents 40% of the city by population, we're down to now meeting only 5% of the time of city council meetings. I would hope that when you consider a motion to schedule for this next fiscal year, that you'll go back to the previous schedule of every month, and that's only 10%, but it's better than what's going on now. Or maybe we have to wait until the new, the new council members are seated and try then. And then, secondly, the decision to turn off the video conferencing testimony opportunity from Van Nuys City Hall was not done by the mayor in the mayor's budget last year. It was done, initiated from the Budget and Finance Committee. The cost, since the General Services Staff, now LAPD, is there anyway, the cost is relatively minor because it's just the ITA cost to turn on the equipment. So I would ask that during this budget process, that that small amount of money be restored and that the remote video conferencing opportunity from the Van Nuys City Hall be turned back on, and that the people of the San Fernando Valley have a convenient place to come and speak to their city council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seen no other cards in public comment. The desk closed public comment period. Mr. Clerk, what's next?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and refer?
The desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? Any announcements?
I think the biggest announcement I wanted to make is, as you all know, the second Saturday of every May is Fire Service Day, and since 1958, a tradition started in Los Angeles City now, throughout the county and the state, firehouses have opened their doors for special events. In my district, at Station 27 in Hollywood, a pancake breakfast at the Historic Museum right there at Coiga, just south of Sunset Boulevard, also on Vineland Avenue in Toluca Lake, right next to the Hollywood Freeway, Station 86, and in the valley, Station 88, the heavy urban, urban task force, all the work that's done there, great pancake breakfast there, which is at Sepulveda right at the 101. So open house at every fire station, all 106 fire stations in the city of Los Angeles. Those are three pancake breakfasts, and I encourage everyone to go out and meet their local firefighters and learn about earthquake safety. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. On that note, just wanted to share with you that in the Latino community, Dia de Mayo is Dia de las Madres, and I want to wish all the Madresitas Feliz Dia, given it's Mother's Day in Latino community. That being said, Constance Rossendall.
Yes, just to follow up on Mr. Laban, Fire Station 63 has its pancake breakfast on Saturday, and I'm looking forward to being there at 9:30 in the morning at Fire Station 63. Thank you.
Thank you. Constance Buscayino.
I just wanted to wish all our mothers Happy Mother's Day this Sunday, and especially those mothers on my staff, and of course, my wife, who I love dearly, and my mom and mother-in-law, who are just incredible, incredible mothers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Constance Laban.
Mr. President, my mom's in heaven, so I want to wish her up there, and all moms, you too, Billy, and all moms, and it's a great day, and I want to wish my wife a good day. But all our mothers are very special. Without our mothers, there's no... But all our mothers are very special, without our mothers, there's no world.
You're absolutely right. Okay, that takes care of announcements. Adjourning motions, colleagues, any adjourning motions? Please stand, everybody in the chamber, please stand in the audience as well, please stand over in the back. Yes. Thank you. Congressman Alcorn.
Councilmembers, I'm doing this adjourning motion at the request of my chief of staff, Becca Doten, who had the opportunity to travel to Armenia with a delegation of Americans to work on a Habitat for Humanity project in Yerevan. And one of the leaders of the delegation passed away, so this is a tribute to him. Bob Edgar represented Philadelphia for six terms in Congress, but his influence of the region and the country well exceeded his time in office. Edgar, who died of a heart attack Tuesday, April 23rd, at the age of 69, was a man of seemingly endless energy, enthusiasm, and compassion. He headed the Good Government Group, Common Cause, and earlier had served as president of Claremont School of Theology in California, as Secretary General of the National Council of Churches, and as a Methodist minister. "He was always trying to make the world a better place for human beings," said his wife, Merle Edgar. As a young chaplain at Drexel University, Edgar helped found an emergency treatment center for low-income women in West Philadelphia. It became the People's Emergency Center, a homeless services organization. In 1974, benefiting from the reaction to the Watergate scandal, Edgar became the first Democrat since the New Deal to win a House seat in a staunchly Republican Delaware county. He held onto the seat far longer than expected because he was an exemplary representative. He made his offices convenient to mass transit and frequently held public meetings. He wrote, he wrote the community right to no provision of the Superfund Pollution Cleanup Legislation, and he helped the Vietnam veterans deal with the consequences of Agent Orange exposure and post-traumatic stress syndrome. He rallied, he railed against pork barrel spending and fought for transit funding. After losing his bid to unseat Senator Arlen Specter in 1986, he went back to his religious work. Then in 2007, he returned to politics, but this time to fix it. He became president of Common Cause, one of the first civic organizations to focus on the corrupting influence of money and politics. In that role, he was a fair and frank critic of both political parties, chiding them equally for selling access to politicians. He wasn't about to retire anytime soon. At the time of his death, he was expecting to give Common Cause two more years of service. In his role as president of Common Cause, Bob was very pleased to hear that the city of Los Angeles placed Measure C overturning Citizens United on the ballot. He was a staunch advocate for good government and taking money out of politics. Bob Edgar was a man of caring and heart, caring and heart, excuse me. In 2006, as I said, he traveled to Armenia for several weeks to join a Habitat for Humanity build in Yerevan area. This is where my chief of staff met him. In addition to painting, sanding, and building, he presided over a wedding ceremony of two 80-year-old members of the Habitat delegation who decided to marry while on the trip. Edgar's rare intellect and integrity and decency will continue to inspire for much longer.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions, Congressman? Rosenthal, yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city of Los Angeles and the entire law enforcement community mourns the loss of 11-year veteran police officer Anthony Edwards, who passed away yesterday from medical complications after running a 5K run honoring the memory of Officer Tommy Scott. Officer Scott, his academy classmate, was killed in the line of duty in April 2005, which, of course, I've been at all the services honoring him, and many of you know, as you go down Lincoln Boulevard toward the airport, off to the right, you'll see a memorial to Tommy E. Scott. And we were raising money for a Tommy E. Scott Scholarship Fund. Officer Edwards was 46 years old, joined the airport police in October 7th of 2011, and was assigned to patrol services at Los Angeles International Airport. Quote, "The entire airport police force is saddened by the sudden loss of Officer Edwards, who was dedicated to supporting his fellow officers and to ensuring the safety and security of the traveling public," said airport police chief Patrick Gannon. Quote, "We extend our deepest sympathies to his family, friends, and close colleagues. May he rest in peace." Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Congressman Buscayino.
Thank you. I'd like to second that and to Officer Edwards and his family, our thoughts and prayers are with you. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Audrey Olivia Regalado. It's a great sadness that we adjourned today's meeting. Baby Audrey, who passed away on Saturday, May 4th, she was only four months old. Audrey was born on January 10th, 2013, to Manuel and Sarah Regalado. Baby Audrey is a granddaughter of Joanne Valley, a pillar in the Harbor Gateway community, well-respected and loved member of the Harbor Gateway community. She's, Joanne Valley is also the executive director of the Harbor City, Harbor Gateway Chamber of Commerce. Baby Audrey survived by her mother Sarah, father Manuel, aunt Emily Bastian, grandparents Julie and Michael Bastian, and lady Opeado. Services are tomorrow morning, 11:00 AM, at the Wayside United Methodist Church in Lomita. Burial services will follow at Green Hill Memorial Park in Rancho Palos Verdes. May baby Audrey rest in peace.
Thank you, Congressman. Any other adjourning motions, seeing none, this means adjourn. Have a great day.